This is our September 29th, 2022 meeting. I'm Christine Vitale, the chair. I'm joined by Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Dr. Tracy, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly. Mrs. Max and Cannelly is actually joining us remotely. Ms. Rotelli sends her apologies. She's under the weather today. Mr. Asa is going to be charged with connecting Mrs. Max and Cannelly remotely if she wants to comment on an agenda item. So he's not just, you know, playing on his phone. He is, he is, he is doing the business of the board. And with that, I'm going to ask you all, please rise for the pledge. I'm going to ask for the board's unanimous consent just to move one agenda item up before public comment, and that is the introduction of, of the Director of Communications. Ms. Rachel Chappa, Dr. Tracy, would you do us the honor of the introduction?
Yes, very pleased to introduce Rachel Chappa tonight. And Rachel, if you would come up to the microphone and just say a few words of introduction. Rachel comes to us from the Norwalk School System where she had a similar responsibility for making sure that news about the schools got out and the public's questions got answered. She's a Fairfield resident and a mother, so she's also a customer of the school system. But we're happy to have her. And Rachel, I just thought you'd take a couple of minutes to let the board know you're here and what you are about. Thank you.
I got it. Thank you so much, Dr. Tracy. I really appreciate the introduction. I am honored to be here as part of the Fairfield Public Schools team. As Dr. Tracy said, I am a Fairfield resident. I'm also a mom of four young children who are in the district. As a parent, I can say that I truly understand and appreciate timely, effective, and clear communication. As a professional in the communications field for the past two decades, my goal is to ensure that staff, parents, and community members are well-informed. Everyone in our, our community and beyond should know just how exceptional our district is. I'm looking forward to working with the Board of Education collaboratively, as well as principals and staff to share the good news. Thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome. We're looking forward to working with you in the year ahead. And any board members, feel free to reach out to Rachel with any good news that you hear around the district, same thing for staff.
The bad news gets out by itself.
The bad news is, the bad news, you can contact Dr. Tracy.
Thank, thank. And I do want to take this opportunity also to thank Andrea Clark, who served in this role previously and through a very tough time with, with COVID and all the stress and anxiety that went with that. So our, our thanks to Ms. Clark and welcome, Ms. Chappa. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to public comment. Just a reminder, the board takes comment on agenda items only. We also take public comment at the end of the meeting and prior to any action items. We allot three minutes per speaker. So if anybody would like to give comment at this time, I invite you to come forward. Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the first reading of course, Yoga Mindfulness II. Dr. Zavajansik.
Good evening. James Zavajansik, Chief Academic Officer. And I am joined tonight with Ms. Mayron, who will introduce herself in a moment. She is our Physical Education Coordinator. There are three course proposals in front of you today. We're going to begin with Yoga Mindfulness and Personal Fitness II as a sequence to Yoga Mindfulness and Personal Fitness I. Just for the public's understanding of the process of course additions and changes, many of these come about from our teachers, specifically at the high school for these courses today. They get in touch with their department leaders and program coordinators. They look at student requests and what students are interested in continuing, as well as courses that might need to be explored further that we don't offer currently in the schools. You'll see the participation soon in the current enrollment of Yoga and Mindfulness I and our proposal in front of you for Yoga and Mindfulness II. After that process, the department begins to develop a curriculum for the course and a proposal, including the standards, expected outcomes, objectives, content, and skills. And those get brought before our Central Office Committee, Curriculum Committee, as well as our high school joint leadership, which includes the administrators from both high schools who go through an approval process before it gets to this stage with the department. So again, thank you for consideration of this course. And I'll turn it over to Janice and Barry for the presentation of Yoga and Mindfulness II. Thank you.
Thank you for having us again. I'm Janice Mayron, and to my right is Barry Rabin, the Wright House, House Principal at Ledlow, and she is our supervisor in PE. So in case you had other questions that I couldn't answer, I brought my trusty sidekick with me. So this is our vision and purpose for Yoga Mindfulness and Personal Fitness II. We are expanding on Yoga Mindfulness I. It was a very sought-after class, and the children really liked it a lot. And we were needing to advance it to a Yoga II for any juniors who, once they have it as, as their elective, they wanted to take it as a senior and it fit into their schedule. Not all students were able to fit it into their schedule, but many, most did. And we want it to be geared toward increasing the challenges on the skills and increasing the use of breath work and getting new information to them on breath work. I was just talking to Dr. Tracy at the start, saying that at UCLA and San Diego, excuse me, Stanford University, they have entire departments based just on breath work. It's fascinating, their newest information. So as soon as they publish it, weed it up and then share it with our kids. And they are able to decide what breath work they like, what one they want to do in stressful situations, how they can use it before tests and driver's tests, if they're stuck in that long line of traffic and their class is starting, if they're going to do, but this was a very popular one during the blood drive. The students were saying, we use that blood, you know, we used, when we were giving blood, we used our breath so we didn't pass out. You're like, that's a good thing. So we're just continuing on with what we have in, in the Yoga I, but increasing the difficulty level on everything. The overview, I think I've already covered that, I'm sorry. So you, it increases self-esteem, enhances positive feelings, heightens self-awareness, improves concentration. It is so important for these kids to have a break in their day from their AP exams or just their regular tests and pressures of high school life, that the, the kids come in and just fall onto the mats and get into their breathing. And they leave totally refreshed, and they're, they're all saying that on their way out. So they increase their flexibility, they increase range of motion, they're going to learn about their breathing techniques and positive impact on their overall wellness, increasing their strength. Then we're going to add how music and setting and all of the voice and tone and pacing improves their enjoyment of yoga. If you go on to, I'm sure you all don't do it, but I'm on YouTube all the time looking for good yoga videos, and there are so many different teachers and, and musics and setting, and, and it's, it's a way for them to find the one that fits for them. We create a mindfulness toolkit, which is a folder that they take with them after they leave the class with lots of tools in motivational quotes, their choice of a mindfulness coloring page. And that is the day that is the most shocking to me, when I, I offered a coloring page. It was a really stressful, it was right around exam time last year, and there was not a peep from anyone in class. They just got their crayons, their markers. I thought they'd all be chatting and taking a chance to catch up with each other. Not one word was spoken. They were so into the, the mindfulness coloring page. They obviously learned that it worked. We do a lot of bulletin boards with gratitude thoughts and nature pictures. And then the Yoga II people will lead their classmates. If we have to have a combined class just because of numbers, they'll lead their classes, their classmates in their favorite yoga poses and flows. Then they'll also choose which videos they like, and then we'll explore those more. And then the last one is, they're going to share what they've learned in Yoga II to the Yoga I peers or people in the building who they ask about if yoga is, is the thing for them or not. So they are able to share that information as well. These are some examples, and please don't ask me to say those names. That's why I have the Flying Crow and the Americanized names on the left-hand side. I'm not really good with the Sanskrit, especially for the Royal Pigeon posture there. But these are just some of the poses we would add. They're, they're more complex. Not all children have to do them, they just see them, and if they feel comfortable to do it, they'll do it. And what you see up there are the years. Last year's, how many students requested the class and how many were able to be put on the rosters because of scheduling was open for them for those periods. And then this year's increases, as you can see. And Fairfield Ledlow, we had 237 requested this year and 210 are enrolled. And last year, we had only 184 rostered. And this is some of our artwork. And I'm very proud of this, and I know it looks very elementary, but they get this and they love to just put up their favorite quotes. Or the bottom left-hand side are index cards. They put a quote on each of those. So that was on a bulletin board near the, near the cafeteria. And they could, there were probably 250 cards there, index cards with different quotes on them. And they were encouraged, all students in the whole building, including teachers and any staff members, were encouraged to take a card if they were feeling down some of those things, or "You are powerful," "Be a friend." There was a lot of different thoughts, "Believe," I can't remember all of them right now. But I saw as many staff members as students taking them. So it was a little boost during the day. They were able to take a quote, feel good about it. If they didn't like the quote they got, they got to put it back in, and then they were able to take another one. And then the hands are something we worked on this year so far in Yoga I. They were able to write down how they could be a friend for someone on each finger. It's hard for you to read what each finger says, but they were talking about how they could help a friend in need. And then the center is what they would need if they were looking for a hand for someone to help them. And that is our, our pretty artwork. And Yoga II, sorry. Yoga II, they would then create the bulletin board choices. Some things resonated with them more than others, and that the Yoga II kids would create their own bulletin board ideas with what they liked. As I, as you can see, there's really minimal expense. No new teacher hires are expected because it's the requests for the classes that dictate the number of sections. We are down to eight sections at, eight sections at Ledlow, and I believe seven sections at Ward currently. No textbook, clearly. And the only supplies are mats that everybody uses. So they're just our regular PE mats that the after-school teams use as well. Blocks and straps are ordered once, and you're used them for many years. And does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I just wanted to say that I'm so thrilled that this is up for consideration. I've received so much positive feedback from our high school students that have taken Yoga I, and I'm just thrilled. There were quite a few of them had approached me and begged last spring for this course. So I'm really happy to see it come to this table and excited about what we, it does, not just for the bodies of these students, but for their minds too. So thank you for that.
Thank you for sharing that.
Ms. Kelly.
Hi, thanks again for the presentation. My first question was going to be, how many sections? But you just got to that, so I'm going to ignore that for now. I was wondering if you had a sense of, because it was new and because of the enrollment numbers, or new-ish, I should say, do you have a sense of where enrollment dropped off then? Like people were trading off what to take yoga?
Well, this year, we started with electives. This is the first year that elect, excuse me, last year was the first year electives were offered. So for 11th and 12th graders, we didn't just offer traditional PE, we offered a series of electives. So they were spread out amongst all the electives.
Okay, so I guess a better question would be, how does this enrollment compare to the other electives that were offered?
Much, much higher, much, much higher. Sorry.
We can get you enrollment and breakdown of classes for a memo coming up. I don't have it with me today.
Okay. And I, I only ask because I have, I have to ask that during the budget season, we had, we were given this list of all the classes that had less than like 15 kids enrolled in it, and the list is quite extensive, which still kind of sticks, it's a, it bothers me. This sheet bothers me. And I know we were given, you know, there's some classes that are combined, so they're not just for kids. Some were the aquaculture, some are Walter Fitzgerald, which is a smaller population. I get some of those, but some of them really still stick in there. And so I was just wondering, when we add, look to add things, if, if we also look to take things away? Sorry, if I could just add, add one more thing to that, because I wanted to look it up, because I know we're going to be hearing about a couple more classes that we're adding. And my other concern is that we did get the 10-year projections, and it is saying between, I had to write it down, between ninth, ninth and 12th grade enrollment is projected to decline until reaching bottom in 2029 and 2030, which means an, an overall decline of 320 students is projected over the next decade. So we're going to, we're decreasing our population, we're increasing our electives, which I can only mean is going to make this list bigger. I'm guessing.
And so I, yep, so I understand the, the logic of that. I'm not disagreeing with it. We will get the PE breakdown of electives and what the numbers are. Essentially, it is student-driven, so the, if a course, if a PE elective would go under a certain threshold as a result of more students enrolling in yoga and mindfulness II, the teacher would essentially be teaching this section versus, versus another section, which would be under-enrolled and not within the schedule. I know our schedule is here, scheduler of one of the high schools is here if she wants to add anything else in regards to the student requests that come up.
To the point that Dr. Zavajansik was just making, I think in terms of the list that you have in front of you, I don't see that happening in PE with the addition of this course, because the point is that we would create the sections based on what the enrollment requests are, and it's not adjusting our FTE. So it might be one less section of a PE 12 and an additional section of Yoga II.
Can I, can I follow up on that just quickly? I, I mean, the, the block that I'm having with is, and correct me if I'm wrong, to teach Yoga II, you would need a specific skill set. It's not a generalized PE skill set. So if you, if you enroll further sections for this class, will you need to hire somebody with that skill set that's not currently on staff?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Okay. No, because it's still a PE class, and I, I don't have any certification as a, you know, a special badminton person, but I do have a skill set for yoga. I've been practitioner since 1990. So I don't, I, I foresee that I can cover the classes.
I, I think to the point of Ms. Mayron here, if a new teacher were to be given a section of this, and when I say new, new to this actual section, maybe not new to the Fairfield Public Schools, there may need training and professional development in order to work with somebody who's taught the course before. That would, that would be similar to some of our other courses, especially when it's a new class, to make sure that our, you know, teachers are paired up and able to teach the content and skills. But at this point, we, we don't see a need for putting someone through specialized training, essentially, for the yoga courses. And to Ms. Mayron's point, it would be the, for certification-wise, the lowest level, it would be the same certification.
All right, thank you. That actually answers exactly my question.
Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. One, one thing just to address Ms. Kelly's concern, I was just looking at the Program of Studies, and it does specifically say with the Phys Ed electives, if there are enough interested students, classes will be offered in the following. So there is that, you know, so it, it says right there that, so I'm assuming that if you didn't have enough, that you wouldn't. But very clearly, looking at the numbers for the Yoga I, that, that certainly was not an issue with this particular class. And I would imagine, knowing its popularity, I would think that Yoga II would, would be just as well. And, and Phys Ed is a requirement. So it's not like some electives where you don't have to take them. I mean, you do have to take Phys Ed. So that is just, that kind of differentiates it from some of the other electives that you don't necessarily have to.
Thank you. That's absolutely true, yes.
Anyone else? Thank you. I'm excited for this course offering for the same reasons that Ms. Guernsey, just for the physical health and for the mental health. I think it complements a lot of the social emotional learning that we, initiatives that we're putting forward this year, the concerns around mental health for our students, that how wonderful that this provides an opportunity for them to maybe just get a, a mental break or reset, recharge, as well as a physical one. So thank you for the presentation, and this will be before the board at our next meeting for a vote.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, first reading of course, Advanced Pottery.
So thank you again. For the next course here, I'm joined with Ms. Hermsen, who is our Art Education Coordinator for the department, and she will introduce herself and her colleague in a moment. This is listed, both of the, the next two are listed as a new course proposal because they have new curriculum to them, and essentially, students would be enrolling in a new course. So just to give background on this before the presentation begins, the high school program of study currently offers students Advanced Pottery and Advanced Sculpture as, as a single course, a singleton course. The goal here is to essentially split the course into two, keep the same timeframe, and have a different curriculum that, some of the same, but different curriculum than is currently suggested within the Program of Studies, that will go more in-depth with each of those skills. In a moment, Ms. Mayron will say why the current course trajectory becomes difficult, both for students and the instructional aspects of the course, and why this was brought forward to split the courses for, for the students' program of study here. So thank you for coming, Ms. Hermsen, and I'll pass it over to you.
Hi, everyone. Board of members, Dr. Tracy, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Michelle Hermsen. I'm the K through 12 Art Department Coordinator for the town of Fairfield. This is my colleague, Margaret Capron, from Ward High School. So tonight, the Art Department is here to propose a change of curriculum, which entails eliminating the existing Advanced Pottery and Sculpture course and adding two additional courses to the Program of Studies, an Advanced Pottery course and an Advanced Sculpture course. This course was originally designed to be a part of a pathway for art students interested in three-dimensional arts. Ideally, the pathway would require each student to engage in Intro to Sculpture and Intro to Pottery, and then take the Advanced Pottery and Sculpture class. Unfortunately, due to multiple factors, including lack of time in their schedule, most students don't have the opportunity to take both the Introduction to Sculpture and the Introduction to Pottery before taking the Advanced Pottery and Sculpture. This leads to students focusing on either pottery or sculpture, but usually not both. Although the current framework appears logical on paper, it is yielding unsatisfactory results in our classroom. The elimination of the current course, Advanced Pottery and Sculpture, and the addition of two separate courses, Advanced Pottery, Advanced Pottery and Advanced Sculpture, allows for more transparency and accuracy on student transcripts and provides the students and counselors a more logical pathway through the program. Additionally, and most importantly, there will be more opportunity for depth of learning as content will be specific to the intended learning experience. And please note, currently, there's no intermediate levels of these courses. There are an infinite number of ideas that can be pursued in creating meaningful and expressive pottery. This course is all about furthering discovery while stretching your knowledge and ability. Students will be asked to build upon their knowledge of materials and the techniques learned from the Intro to Pottery course. Upon completion, students will have the pieces for, for a beginning 3D portfolio and can apply for the AP 3D Design Portfolio course. Currently, both the Intro to Pottery students and the Intro to Sculpture students are placed into the Combined Advanced course, as I stated before. The vast array, the vast array of content, combined with varying learning abilities, is creating an environment non-conducive to a productive learning environment. Additionally, if enrollment is low in any of the 3D courses, the students are collapsed together, causing yet a more complex situation. Simply, we feel there's too much happening, and discipline-specific content is being diluted. At this advanced level, there needs to be an opportunity for more, more depth of learning. Separate, sorry, James. Separating these courses allows for a more thorough learning experience for the art student, allowing themselves to dive, dive deeper into subject matter, investigate the answers to more questions, and ultimately develop a deeper understanding of the subject matter. When the curriculum was passed in, in March of 2020, the day that we all left for the, for COVID, we had written this, and it did seem logical at the time it was passed and approved. And since then, a lot has, a lot has happened. And interestingly enough, as Ms. Mayron had just suggested, you know, students really, all of a sudden, more students love to work with their hands. They want to be more hands-on. I think really COVID did, it, it showed them how much they really appreciate being in the classroom, working on, working on projects, working alongside each other. And these 3D classes are getting, gaining more and more momentum. Also, as you may recall, some of you maybe, may have been on the board when Foundations was split from the one year into the Foundations 2D and 3D. That happened to, I'm going to, I'm going to guess about five years ago. We're seeing the momentum of that too, because what's happened is it separated those tracks, and the 3D students are all of a sudden coming up sort of hot and heavy now. They're really, we're, we're seeing our numbers really grow at both schools. They're really enjoying the experience, and we're noticing that this course wasn't setting the students up for the AP 3D course like we had hoped. And now, all of a sudden, we have students at both schools for the first time in a very long time, as long as I certainly can remember. as long as I certainly can remember, who are interested in doing the AP 3D college board exam. So we want to prepare them the right way and we feel like we are doing an insufficient job because the structure is just not, after reassessing it, it's just not right. The separation allows for more logical placement if collapsing classes is necessary. So now, when a guidance counselor gets a request to take advanced sculpture and pottery, they're not really sure if the student is interested in sculpture or pottery. So when, if, for instance, the, the course is, there, there's not enough enrollment in the course and the course gets canceled, or they have to collapse the class into another, into another course, which that happens a lot in the arts. Because there's, as you may recall, there's only 3.0 FTE at Ward and 3.4 FTE at Lolo. So there's not a lot of availability. There's not a lot of classes that are available. So there may, they may have to run, they may have to collapse, collapse classes in order to allow the students to be able to partake in, in the class that they are, are most interested in. So in this case, if the student, of course, it's very, it's, you know, very transparent on the transcript. If the student signs up for the advanced sculpture class, for instance, and that's not running, then they will be collapsed into the introduction to sculpture class. So that, you know, they'll be, you know, taking, they'll be in the same type of, using the same type of materials and the teacher will be able to streamline them better. So in the event too few students sign up for advanced sculpture, they'll be collapsed in the intro to sculpture. If too few students sign up for advanced pottery, they'll be collapsed in the intro to pottery. Sculpture stays with sculpture and clay stays with clay. There are no personnel, personnel or material supply expenditures beyond current expectations with the, with the addition of this course. Are there any questions or comments?
Hi, thanks very much. Just unapersonal, my daughter took the pottery and sculpture class and we still have all of her stuff all over the place. Some of them never got to be baked in the kiln because she was, it, she was taking it her last semester. So we still have some unfinished work, but they're even unfinished, they're still beautiful and-
You can bring it back.
Oh, great. Yeah, okay.
We've got our new kilns now.
Excellent. Okay. Well, I will be showing up with a bag of unfinished pottery, so thank you for that. I just have a question about the numbers. Would you be able to, if you don't know off the top of your head, just the number of students who, who are currently enrolled in the intro to sculpture, the intro to pottery, and the advanced class as of now?
I actually don't know. I don't have those numbers and I don't want to just start spewing.
Absolutely. So if you don't have them now, if we could just get those, I think that would just be helpful just to kind of get a sense of, of where we are right now. And maybe even like, if we get like a couple of year, like last year and this year or something, just to kind of see. And I realize that, that the numbers, it might be a little tricky, especially with the, what we've been having for the past couple of years.
Also, I just want to ask, now, do you want the, the student requests or who actually got the courses?
I think both would be helpful, just like we had with the yoga, you know, how many wanted to try to take the class and how many ended up actually being able to enroll in it. I think that would be helpful. And especially, I know, talking about the collapsing sections, I, I know that my daughter experienced that with a few different art classes over the four years she was in school, so.
So I, I just, just want to make it, you know, I, I know that you, you all understand this, but because of the limited classes that are able to be offered and the, you know, the other, the priorities in regards to scheduling, that makes it for a very complicated, that makes it complicated in regards, when you see who actually was a, the, the request filled, I think they call it, right? The request filled. I think that's the list Ms. Kelly has in front of her. You're looking at the requests that were filled, but sometimes you have to make sure you ask for the, the actual student request, the original student request, because there's really a disparity there. And it's, it's interesting.
We will compile a report for you of the PE as well as the, both art for over several years with requests as well as actual enrollment.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Mr. Peterson, did you ever hand up? Okay. Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, thank you for, oh, am I on? Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. Love the idea and totally on board with that. My question becomes the sequence. I'm specifically on the trajectory page. We're separating the, the proposal is to separate the advanced sculpture and pottery into two instead of one. So my question, my first question is what happens to the prerequisite for AP 3D art? Because right now, it's one prerequisite, this one combined class. How will the prerequisite for AP 3D change? And I would hope that we wouldn't be putting one more prerequisite in the way of getting there. So right now, there's one, there's, go ahead.
So with the 3D portfolio, that 3D can be sculpture or it can be pottery. So they follow the track for pottery. They're prepared to do a pottery portfolio for 3D design. Doesn't necessarily have to be both. It can be one or the other for the 3D portfolio.
No, I know what you mean, but in our program of studies, the prerequisite to take the AP course is this one combined class that we currently have. Does, will anything change for that by splitting these in two? My guess is that it will have to change. James is saying yes.
Yeah, we would have to make sure the course is beyond the ones that are sort of in the, between the first and the last, have the right path within them so that it doesn't create another barrier in order to get to a advanced course.
There wouldn't be enough years to probably get there, is my concern. So if we could just have a follow-up on how the program of studies would change to qualify for the AP 3D, or just the sequence in general. And then on the other end of the spectrum, we've got the foundations in 3D art. And I understand the scheduling, believe me. I, I get how that works, that you want to take it, but it doesn't fit, and .5 and 1-0 and all that, right? I get it. The foundations in art 3D and the intro courses that are being split here. Just pardon the ignorance, but just in terms of, is there a way to make those more of a combined? I'm not saying, it might be so differentiated that it can't be possible. I'm just thinking out loud, how do we get this trajectory a little bit collapsed, if possible? And if not, then that's fine. And not because I don't want to offer the classes, but I just want people to be able to fit, you know, the trajectory in. That's more of the goal.
See, the trick is that, the, the real obstacle is that, especially in 3D art, it takes so long to create something good that we need the time. We need the time. We can't, the, the more that we collapse, the more that we collapse the classes together or combine or-
That's not what I meant. I, I can follow up. It's more about the sequencing, but I, I can, I can follow up with it. You've got one, two, three, four, five, six steps all the way across. I'm wondering if we can get that down to five. Do you know what I'm saying? Between the foundations, what's the big difference between foundations and intro is really the one question that I have.
Yeah, I see the six steps there. I know the, the two to the right are recommended to go in the opposite direction. So if you started with intro to sculpture, of course, we'd want you to take the other to get there, but it is not necessary, necessary that, to the track to get to the, to the final piece there.
And I just might add, so potentially, like the art elective of choice, the student isn't required to take that to get to the AP 3D exam. And as I understand it, actually, you don't even have to be enrolled in an AP class to take the AP exam. But like, like we said, it's a matter of time. It's, you know, the students, most students aren't disciplined enough. Especially, they want to take the 3D exam, but they aren't disciplined enough to come independently and work independently. So we say, you know, make sure you're in the art area. You can take an art elective of choice and we'll work on your, you know, your 3D work, but it isn't required.
Right, thank you. So just if we can get a follow-up on the prerequisites in the program of studies, that would be helpful. Thanks so much.
Any other questions? Ms. Guernsey.
Just a quick comment regarding this change. I, I really think it's a welcome change. You know, thinking about my own art background and how vastly different the needs for the ceramic arts and hand building and pottery and, and that category is so different than the work we're doing in 3D sculpture. I really can't even fathom how you're teaching those at the same time. So to disconnect them and then provide this opportunity to stack the advanced class with the intro class just makes so much sense to me. And I think it would be great if we could be flexible in allowing for this change. And to Ms. Jacobson's point, you know, I, I do worry about things being accessible in terms of, you know, getting these kids to be able to prepare their portfolios. But I think these classes are doing exactly that. It's giving them times to develop those really specific skills that they need. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other further questions on this item, we'll move on to first reading advanced sculpture.
So this one is, this presentation is going to be similar to the advanced pottery. We did not duplicate the slides that we just talked about in terms of the trajectory and so forth. But Ms. Hermsen will go through the student expectations and how this course is a new course in terms of the depth of knowledge students will be engaged with as a separate course from its current offering.
So I don't want to be completely repetitive here because what we just did is divide the two courses. So I won't bore you with my nasally voice. So the purpose and vision, current sculpture and pottery programming, the separation again of the course, the 3D arts pathway. We're opening up opportunities for students and we're most interested in the depth of learning. And this is all about, of course, deepening their understanding and demonstrating the knowledge, identifying and summarizing the important features and various concepts and processes of 3D art. Kids learn to apply and analyze in these courses and evaluating and creating. Practice, monitor, develop excellence through practice, reflecting, critiquing, and revising. There's an extensive list of essential questions. Again, this is, these are aligned right to our new curriculum document and the state standards and, you know, in the enduring understandings. Our courses have gotten very much more involved in regards to higher-order thinking. We love talking in art a lot more than we ever have, which has become an amazing thing. hashing out in our ideas and our, they're called guiding questions before we start investigating topics. And it's, there's a trickle-down effect. We've gotten really good at it at the AP levels and it's trickling down our program. And the students are becoming just smarter and more insightful and amazing. And it's been, been really exciting. So this is what you're kind of seeing right here. Good news, no personnel and material supply expenditures beyond current expectations with the addition of this course. This sculpture actually that you're looking at right here, this, it was an example of, this, this actually took three-quarters of the semester to make. Mrs. Zimmerman, the teacher at Fairfield Lolo, wanted me to just comment on that. That's one of the reasons for the separation of, of the course is just things, good things, good quality things take a really long time. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentations and as with yoga, this will be on our next agenda for a vote. If anybody has any additional questions, you know, before our next meeting, please just forward them along to Dr. Tracy and he'll get them to Dr. Zavajanzak. Moving on to adoption of policy 6148 instruction, FAFSA completion rates. The recommended motion, the Board of Education dot policy 6148 instruction, FAFSA completion rates. I don't know if Ms. Max and Cannelly is on the line. If not, I don't, this was before the board our last meeting. Kind of a motion, sorry. Motion, Ms. Gerber, a second. Ms. Jacobson? Any discussion? Ms. Guernsey, Ms. Jacobson, I don't know if you have any?
Nope, just that it was on before. I don't believe Mrs. Max and Cannelly received any questions on it. It's a required policy per statute that we have to encourage completion, but should be pretty straightforward.
Any questions for members of the policy committee? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it to the public. Any members of the public who would like to give comment on this voting item, invite you to come forward. Seeing none, we'll take it to the board for a vote. All in favor? Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Ms. Gerber, Ms. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly. Is Ms. Max and Cannelly on? Mr. Asa? They're connecting. Okay. Okay, seven oh. Okay, moving on, discussion of possible action on success or collective bargaining agreement with secretaries' union. That the Board of Education hereby moves into, hereby moves to provide funding for and otherwise accept and approve the tentative agreement for a success or collective bargaining agreement with the secretaries' union for the period of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, second. Mr. Peterson? The board typically does not discuss personnel matters, so I'll take it to the board, write for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our district improvement plan update. I know it's early in the year, but Dr. Tracy?
Thank you. And I, off the top, I want to thank our executive directors and program directors who contributed the information that I'm going to share briefly with you tonight. We'll be, we will be coming back for the scheduled October update, but I, I wanted to give you a, an early report, even though we haven't finished the first month of the school year yet. So just quickly by a subject area, I'm going to start with social studies because that's my favorite. So far, the social studies team has developed guides for all K-5 social studies units using the district's template. They've also developed guides for the middle school grades for research in partnership with the library media specialists. And at the high school level, guides for writing to be used when reviewing student work on midterm assessments. In the English language arts arena, we are in the process of convening the ELA steering committee. Just today, the state came out with their official list of acceptable reading programs in Connecticut. So we're all digesting that and, and preparing to bring that information to the English language arts steering committee so that we can begin to figure out what this means for Fairfield. And I suspect that will be a major budget priority for the year ahead. In mathematics, we've reviewed all of the K-5 common assessments, completed a review of all the K-5 common assessments. We've purchased the Bridges Math Program for our pre-K kids. Multi-tiered support work has begun between the middle schools and the elementary schools. And common intervention programs are in place for kids who need extra help. At the secondary level, our math teachers are building implementation guides and common assessments for their middle and high school courses. And a K-12 assessment review committee has been established to take a careful look at how we measure student progress in this area. With respect to science, revisions to the elementary science guides were completed this summer. And teacher training in assessing in science has begun this fall and will continue throughout the year. At the secondary level, unit guides that include common assessments have been developed for grade six, seven, and eight. And this year will be focused on the implementation of common unit plans that reflect the next generation of science standards. So lots of work there. A major part of the district improvement plan- So lots of work there. A major part of the district improvement plan, as you know, has to do with social emotional learning. And in that arena, principals at each of our schools are identifying an SEL teacher leader. Actually, by the end of the week, we expect to know this tomorrow. We are going to be launching the SEL universal screening survey on October 8. Letters have gone out to all the parents to let them know that this is coming. We've also drafted a multi-tiered support structure for the SEL steering committee to consider so that we can identify youngsters that need additional attention in that area. In the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion, also an important theme in your plan, our director of DEI has assisted principals in incorporating concern about diversity and inclusion into their school improvement plans. She's also participating on the literacy development team that I mentioned earlier. We provided professional development to our district leadership team on the four pillars of diversity in public schools. We're recruiting administrators to a district-level equity team and participating in efforts to reduce chronic absenteeism and increase academic performance, especially amongst underrepresented groups. So lots of work going on there as well. Finally, with respect to data related to the plan, the data for the school year just completed, 2021-22, has been uploaded into the district improvement plan in all of the areas except suspensions. We still need to get that in. And now, just recently, all of our school improvement plans have been linked on the website to the district plan. So anybody can venture there and see what each of our schools is taking on for the year ahead. And as I mentioned, when we come back on October 25th, we'll be making a full presentation on the recent data and the progress to that point. That's it for me.
Any questions for Dr. Tracy on that quick, a quick update on all of the work that has been going on since we approved the plan at the end of June?
Thanks. We'll keep going.
Yeah, keep going. And we're looking forward to that presentation in October and further discussion. So we're moving on to first reading of policy 3542.43, Business Non-Instructional Operations Food Service Charging. I'm going to turn it over to the policy committee over there.
Okay, so just an update to this, to this policy. Is Mrs. Laborius here? Yeah, do you want to walk through why we needed to update this a little bit? And just how, it's about collecting meal, you know, how we charge meals and, and payments on that pertaining to our students. So go ahead.
Thank you. So this Connecticut Senate Bill 2 was signed by the governor on June 16th. And the bill prohibits publicly identifying or shaming a child for unpaid meal charges, including taking disciplinary actions, refusing to serve a meal, or providing an alternative option. It also requires all local or regional education boards to create or include a policy or procedure for collecting unpaid meal charges for school meals. And again, it was signed on June 16th. And so we met at the policy committee, went through a few revisions of the policy. And what you have in front of you is intended to ensure we're in compliance with the new law. We don't currently have a 3542.43 in place. So this is a new policy. We do have other 35.42 addressing food services in general. This specifically addresses non-shaming of students as well as procedures to notify families about assistance and notification protocols for negative balance accounts. And it takes a proactive approach to providing families with information about meal assistance throughout the year. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Max and Cannelly is on the phone and she said that we basically covered it. So thank you, Ms. Laborius. Thank you, Ms. Curransey, Ms. Jacobson. Dr. Tracy?
If I could just make a comment. Some of you have seen on the media over the last several years, video of children being humiliated because their bills were not paid, even lunch taken from them and tossed in the garbage in front of their classmates. We're not going to do that in this town. And this policy makes that very clear. So I hope when you, when you see it again, you'll be ready to, to act on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tracy. Moving on, first reading of North Stratfield, Osborne Hill, and Fairfield Woods ed specs. Mr. Papa George.
Good evening, everyone. What you have before you is the ed specification that we are recommending be adopted by the Board of Education and moved on to the first select one, for the selectmen's meeting to adopt this, these ed specifications were put into place for the process of adding air conditioning and means of fresh air to the three mentioned buildings. And also, it discusses the addition of a secured vestibule to the three locations as well. The AC, air conditioning part of these ed specs, as you know, there's been a lot of talk about adding air conditioning to all buildings. This is the first, part of the phase one of that process is these three buildings. We are doing, we are providing the ed specs to you for approval so that we can move through the process and make sure we are in line with any state requirements for reimbursement or grant opportunities that are quickly becoming available to us. The other part of it being is the secure vestibules, which we've added to kind of group the project together at this point. Because after a meeting with the state, we felt that we are most likely going to go after this project as a Oscar reimbursement as opposed to a grant project, but we will still pursue both. And by doing that, that approach, the emphasis would not be on the air conditioning and means of fresh air, it would be on the infrastructure needed to support that type of system. So we felt it was a good place to have the vestibules as well into there.
Ms. Asa.
And Mr. Papa George updated the facilities committee on this at our most recent meeting. But I just wanted to reiterate that we did discuss the, the difference between the, the grant and the traditional type of reimbursement. And I don't have anything to add from the facilities committee other than what he said, but they did have, and I don't know if you want to mention, the meeting that you had specifically with the state on this that kind of reaffirmed why you're taking this path.
So we did do a scope review meeting with the Oscar committee up at the state just this past week. And we, we didn't receive a lot of information. We received a lot of wait until after this coming Friday, tomorrow's webinar on the grant that's coming out. So that is our intent is once the, we will be at the webinar tomorrow. We have a lot of questions. Meeting with the state, I found it interesting that the gentlemen who we met with are also going to be responsible for identifying these, the grant money and where it should be allocated to. And as of our meeting with them on Wednesday, they were told, had not seen the application yet. And they had also been told that when they started asking questions, that they should plan to attend Friday's webinar as well. So we found it interesting that the people that are going to be issuing the money are learning about it at the same time as we are.
Mrs. Cannelly?
Yeah, thank you. Just a question. I noticed in the rationale, it's a very, very minor point, but one of the use uses is often also as a polling location. And I don't know if that's important or of value to add, but I just wanted to mention that.
That, that one of the locations is a polling location. So that might be something to add to the ed spec as a reason, justification for moving this project forward.
Okay, we can add that.
What are the board's thoughts on that? I think it's a good suggestion. Any other questions? Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, thank you. One question, just really quickly looking, I just pulled up like the Mill Hill ed specs. So, I mean, basically, the language is pretty much the same, just specifically regarding the, the vestibule and the air conditioning part. So obviously, like the addition and things like that aren't in these three because they're not getting additions. But the sprinkler, the vestibule, the air conditioning, all of that is the same language that we've had in Mill Hill. And I'm assuming Holland Hill, Riverfield, and so on.
Correct.
And just for the board's clarification, Ms. Jacobson asked this question. The vestibules were listed separately on the waterfall that we reviewed at our last meeting. So they're now being grouped in with this phase one HVAC. And Mr. Papa George, just in terms of the funding, can you just speak to in terms of the next steps? We, when we went before the town bodies last year to kind of move forward with phase one, getting the seed money for it, we had one large dollar amount for that project. At that time, the vestibules were not part of that proposal. So do you foresee?
So you are correct. We, we did ask for the phase one air conditioning funding, which was approved by all town bodies last year. On our waterfall and our capital plan, you will see that we, we did move the vestibules forwards a little bit. But we, we also, during that whole process of moving things around on the waterfall to create the 12.5 cap that we were looking to achieve, we did fall within that cap even with moving these three vestibules forwards at this time. So as part of the next meeting, next agenda item, we will go through the capital requests and non-recurring requests. And you will see that they are in there. There is, there is nothing in the state that we are aware of. We looked extensively and we will follow up again with the state. That doesn't say that the funding cannot be approved at different points for the same project. It just says that funding needs to be approved before applying for the actual project with the state.
Thank you. And just for the board's point of information, the town working group, the capital working group had its informational kind of planning meeting yesterday. And we did, you know, share this information with them briefly at that meeting, just that, you know, give them the heads up that, you know, we're moving forward on it. Any other questions about this? Ms. Jacobson?
I know you're going to be attending the webinar tomorrow and it sounds like we're not going to be pursuing the grant piece of this, but the alternative track. Go ahead.
We absolutely will be going after the grant as well. There's some, we will apply for the phase one air conditioning with the grant. If it is denied, we will then pursue the Oscar reimbursement part of it. In addition, there's other avenues that we're looking at, that when we look closely at for the grant that we could apply for as well, such as the Ledlow High School Controls Project, because part of the grant funding will be reimbursement. So there's that. There's also currently going on in the design phase right now, we bid out early, our early spring is the Fitz House Roo Top Replacement Unit projects that were approved last year. We feel that those would fall under this grant application and could be applied for as well. So there are other projects, including the phase one, that we do intend to apply for.
All right. So just not for what's before us right now, on these ed specs, you're not going to be pursuing that grant for these purposes is what you said. But when you do go to that tomorrow, whatever items we may run through that process, I know you don't have an answer for me right now, but just the, the not being able to use ARP funds on that, regardless if it's through the reimbursement process or the grant, can we get some clarification on that? Specifically, I'm looking to find out if that's a state rule or a federal limitation. And I think it's the former, but I'd like to understand that rationale behind that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on this? Okay, moving on, first reading of capital non-recurring and capital projects.
So what you have before you tonight is the capital and non-recurring books that we have put together. Those of you that have been on the board for a while are used to seeing the same format. The slight difference that you're seeing this year, well, there's two slight differences you're seeing this year. The first one is that we are, there are a couple of projects, such as the Fairfield Ward High School Boiler Replacement and the Naps Highway Tennis Courts. Those are, we are asking for seed money only in those so that we can build the project throughout the year and be ready to go out to bid and have confirmed numbers by the end of summer. So that when we come back to you with the project for funding, we have truer numbers, even truer numbers than we already have in the book. A lot has changed over the years with COVID and supply change. So we, we are comfortable with the numbers, with our usual escalation costs, but we want to be able to be close to 100% when we come back and ask for funding for these projects. It's a step I'm, I would like to see us move forwards with using. It's something we haven't done in the past. We've just, in the past, we've only used numbers from best practice and not actual our specific projects. So that's a big change for us here. The other change is in the years past, you've seen multiple versions of this book come out as different projects are being voted on and approved. We, it got kind of confusing with different town bodies with different books last year. We had three different versions because projects came out three different times. So our thought this year was we put all the projects in one book and we will move forwards with approval of funding. And even if it's not within the same, all at the same time, all the books are out. Everyone has a chance to see them ahead of time. So everyone knows what's coming, even if we're not asking for approval at this time for all the projects, but we're asking for approval for a couple of them. Then we still have the funding in the books available. I hope that makes sense. And the, the projects that we are moving forwards with are right from the waterfall as we presented last week. They're the vestibules. Again, the boiler burners at Ward, the Naps Highway Tennis Courts. In addition, we have three roof projects on there. One of them is design only for next year, as I mentioned. And the other two are the Riverfield and Roger Sherman Partial Roof Replacements. This is the standard format you'll see in the book. It's the, they call it the 14 points. I'm still not 100% sure why, because there's 12 questions on there. But it's the 12 slash 14 questions and also the backup breakdown of the cost in the book, as well as some photos. We love photos.
Mr. Asa.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George. And you've, you've put a request in through the superintendent that I planned to address. But if you could mention the capital projects, the Riverfield roof and the Sherman roof, and why you feel we need to move those forward as a voting item tonight.
Our concern and the reason I am asking for them to be moved as a voting, voting item tonight is, excuse me, the, if we follow the path, the timeline, I should say, of these projects and we don't vote till your next meeting, then we don't go on to the first selectwoman's, or the first selectwoman's meetings until beyond next Monday. And it puts us finishing all board approvals at the end of November. So we missed the November deadline for applications for Oscar reimbursement for those two roofs, which puts us applying for that. And we cannot go out to bid for those roofs until we apply. It puts us applying in the December timeframe, early December for that, which is, within a normal year, still be early enough to get approval and go out to bid. Our concern at this time is, as I mentioned before, the air conditioning or fresh air grant is also due into the same office December 1st. So our concern is that the Oscar applications are going to fall well beyond the grant applications, which will go out for review and then award, and then they will pick up the Oscar applications again. So we feel that we would probably miss our January deadline to try to get out to bid for the summer.
And how would that affect the timing of the project?
We, last year, we did Roger Ledlow Middle School. We went out late, what we felt was late for the project. We, we paid slightly higher costs in the actual project and we were very lucky to be completed in time for school to start.
So just to be clear, since, since COVID and whatnot, things have changed with supply and workload on vendors that are bidding on these projects. So where traditionally in years past, these would go through with the other projects, last year was an anomaly or a change in past practice. And you're looking to do that again this year?
Correct. The, the biggest concern we have and all the vendors have at this point is the insulation used on the roofs is not readily available anymore. Last year, we had a, we had two bidders for the roof project. One of us, one of, only one of the two could guarantee that they actually had the insulation for the roof in stock and ready to start as soon as the project was awarded and ready to go on it. The other vendor was, would not give 100% guarantee on delivery of materials.
And, and just to be clear, you've spoken to the first selectwoman about moving this forward and, and she would be anticipating this if we were to pass it tonight.
She, we did speak with her office and her, she is very excited, I shouldn't say very excited. She is anticipating this project as long as it is approved tonight for them to be on the Board of Selectmen meeting this coming Monday night.
So with that, Madam Chair, I would just like to yield the floor to further questions, but reserve the ability to add an agenda item before we move on to item seven.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. And thank you, Mr. Papa George, for the presentation. And thank you to the- you to the First Select Woman for putting this on the Board of Selectmen Agenda. Last year, we tried to move the Roger Ludlow Middle School roof forward, you know, late summer, early fall. It went through this board, and we faced some challenges getting it on the agendas of other boards. Understandably, they had very full agendas at that time, so we appreciate the openness of the other town bodies to help us move this forward. So before we take, ask to add this to the agenda, I want to bring it to the board for any further questions. Ms. Jacobson?
Just really quickly, on the cost estimate, how recent was that from the architects?
For which project?
Well, the, sorry, the ones that we're going to be asked to approve tonight, the Riverfield and Sherman.
So if you remember, last year, we did the Riverfield Insurance Design Fee applica, we apply, we asked for the money. So those are numbers that we have put together based on actually having the design for those roofs ready, already architect out and ready to go. So they're very new numbers.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Any other questions about any of these projects? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Asa, can I, can I have a motion to add approval of the Holland Hill Elementary School Partial Roof Replacement?
No, Riverfield and Sherman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Riverfield, the, Riverfield and Sherman Roof Replacements, adding this to the agenda. Mr. Asa, a second to add to the agenda. Mrs. Gerber, all in favor of adding it to the agenda? Okay, it is before us. Can I have a motion to approve the Riverfield Elementary School Partial Roof Replacement and the Roger Sherman Partial Roof Replacement? Mr. Asa, a second. Ms. Kelly, back to the board for discussion on this as a voting item. Ms. Asa?
So, Mr. Papa George, just, could you just go back through briefly with the board? What normally would you, else would you be bringing forward before a vote? We've, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've already gone over everything else that's needed to take it to the next phase, correct?
For the two roofs, correct. They are, they are set to go to the First Select Woman's agenda. She did comment that we did kidnap her agenda for Monday.
And with regard to the ed specs on these?
The ed specs, we have already approved when we asked for the funding last year for the seed money.
And will there need to be any changes? Recently, we've had some roof projects where we've needed to make some amendments to ed specs. Do you anticipate needing to do that at all that would delay this process if we move forward now?
We do not.
Thank you.
Any other questions about these two roofs? Seeing none, we'll take to the board for a vote. All in favor? Ms. Kinnealy, are you on?
Ms. Kinnealy could come off.
Okay, thank you. So motion carries eight zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the board for departing somewhat from the ordinary procedure to keep this going, and, and also to thank Mr. Papa George for the care and precision that he devotes to these very complicated projects and keeping them moving. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Moving forward to approval of minutes, have the Board of Education approve the August 24th, 2022 special meeting minutes and the August 30th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Ms. Jacobson, second by Mrs. Gerber. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor? Is Ms.?
Maxon Kinnealy.
Voting in favor, motion carries eight zero. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Tracy?
Okay, thank you. Dr. Parrish is here tonight to present and take questions, if you have any, on the elementary enrollment report that you have before you. And I just want to thank her and the elementary principals for keeping track of these numbers throughout the summer, and as you can imagine, it's a, it's a moving target day to day as people register and as numbers change, and it's also a topic of considerable concern and attention for our parents, so a lot of careful work here. Dr. Parrish?
Good evening, Zakiya Parrish, Deputy Superintendent. Before you have, you have the September 23 enrollment report for our elementary schools. Based on that report, we have 42 more students than what we were projected to have based on the projection provided by SLAM. There are five schools who are currently have one grade level that is at the class size threshold. Grade one at Burr, kindergarten at Holland Hill, grade one at Jennings, grade two at North Stratfield, and grade three at Osborne Hill. There are two elementary schools who needed fewer sections than what we budgeted for. That was North Stratfield, which was one section in grade two, and Stratfield, one section in grade five. And then there were two elementary schools who needed more sections than what we budgeted for. Burr, one section in grade five, and Osborne Hill, one section in kindergarten. So we have 199 sections that were currently needed. We budgeted for 199 sections, so we are flush in terms of the number of sections and not having to add additional staff at this time. There was an additional registration that took place on September 13th in grade three. At the previous, during my previous reporting, we were at 198, and so that took us to the 199. And so at this point in time, we will continue to monitor through the rest of this week, and our official enrollment as of October 1st will be submitted through PSIS.
Thank you, Mr. Asa.
Yeah, so we have at our table the agenda item for September 23rd numbers, and then this, this is the update, I'm assuming, the September 27th?
Okay, I wasn't aware that someone gave you an updated copy. I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I was just wondering if we could, if, if the update reflects what you just mentioned or further updates?
The, the 27th report is similar to the, it's identical to the 23rd. There was no movement in terms of the number of sections, the number of total students enrolled K5, they are the same.
All right. So I, I have a question regarding North Stratfield, and, and this is going back, and, and I understand, you know, our, our policies on collapsing sections and the budget implications, and we have a longstanding practice. My question is, and I believe you alluded to this in a previous meeting, but looking back through packets, I believe it was a Friday packet, I have a document from August 25th that showed North Stratfield Grade Two with fourth, four sections at the 69 threshold. So my, my question is, why on August 25th, if we had those numbers before school started, did we not make that collapse instead doing it later on?
That, that was caught after the fact, and we worked with the principal who worked with her staff and communicated to her parents the need to make the adjustment, but that was something that was an oversight that was not caught prior to the, that point.
I guess I'm confused at not caught, because I, I have the document from the 25th showing four sections. So not caught by the principal or not caught by central, I'm just trying to figure this out, because, you know, obviously, I believe in, in following our policies, and I think opening that up, you know, can, can sometimes open a Pandora's Box. However, I'm just curious, what was, what was the thought process of doing this after school when we knew the numbers prior?
So when the, the extra section was, when we recognized that there was an extra section, that process that we followed during the course of the summer was to have principals contact students and their families of those that were one above or one below the threshold so that we can confirm whether or not they were staying or returning or had plans to withdraw. And during that point in time, there was a student whose family withdrew, and they were not captured in the numbers until after the fact. And so unfortunately, we did not catch it before school started. We communicated with the principal who confirmed that the date that that particular student withdraw, withdrew from the district, and we were able to make the adjustment accordingly. And I believe that previously, we've had to make adjustments in either direction based on changes in enrollment or withdrawing students, whether or not we had to add a section or make some adjustments in the opposite direction.
Yeah, I, I would just be curious on that, because I, I know we've made adjustments in the opposite direction, but I'm not aware of a situation like this, at least in the last 10 years, where we've actually, if not beyond, where we've actually collapsed because of our error. And I'm not advocating to say that, you know, people don't make mistakes and you can't do it, but I, I think we need as a, as a board to recognize, and again, not opening Pandora's Box, but I think we need to look, moving forward, at, at our policy on this and how we're going to address it, because, you know, we talk about the, the well-being of kids and the implications of this at a, at a second grade level and what this does to the kids. You know, if, if they're, if they go to orientation and they meet their teacher and everything, and, you know, it's collapsed before school, it kind of is what it is, right? I mean, we, we've done that, that's what we do, and that's what's accepted. But after school starts, a mistake like this, I just think we need to figure out how best to learn from it and, and figure out, because, you know, if, if all of a sudden we get one more after, you know, after October 1st, and then we're dealt, and then we would have had these, so it's just, you know, hindsight. But I just say this to stress, and I think to the board, and I don't know if it's, I have to think about this and talk to the Policy Committee Chair and see if this is something that we can address, but there's all sorts of implications, no matter what we do. I understand that. But I, I think we need to look at this to do whatever we can to avoid this from happening again.
Yes, and it was done as early as possible, was, I believe, the second day of school, recognizing that we were on the flip side of this last year, where there was an extra section that should not have been there due to a withdrawal, and, and we wanted to be conscious of the feedback we received from the board in reference to that. But I, definitely, we can, it's something that can be discussed further with the, the Policy Committee.
Well, and I think that the board should just think about that. You know, I appreciate staff, really, we take it down to the 11th hour, you know, to get our numbers as close to possible, as close as possible, but, you know, changes are made at the 11th hour sometimes, which is not ideal, I think, for, for those kids that are looking forward to know who their teacher is and who their friends are. But if we push it back, there might be that instance where, you know, we have an extra teacher in certain schools because we didn't get those extra kids. So a to be continued amongst the board and in the Policy Committee. So thank you, Mr. Asa, for bringing that up, and thank you, Dr. Parrish, for the work on this. Any other questions about this?
Mrs. Maxon Kinneley has indicated she has some questions.
Okay.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me okay. Two quick questions.
Do, do us a favor, Ms. Kinneley, and just yell into your phone, it's a little muffled.
Okay. All right. So going forward, we have these grades that are at max. At what point, even if a new student is added, do we go with the sections that we have? We're not looking to expand. I didn't know if we've passed that point already.
So that point is October 1st, which is Saturday. We haven't had any change in the enrollment over the last week, so we, we wouldn't go past that point. And even then, I believe there's been...
Sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say that even then, I think previously, there, you know, depending on what, when the additional student may have been added, how close that was to October 1st, there may be, may have been other adjustments made as opposed to adding sections. Given our para educator situation, I'm not sure if that would be the decision that we would go, go with, but it would be something we would discuss closely with the building principal as well as the teachers involved.
Okay, thank you. And then secondly, in our enrollment report, we also used to get information about the ECC, and I didn't know, and again, I didn't send this question in ahead of time, but I didn't know if Mr. Mancusi would be able to speak to how we are doing for our pre-K numbers.
Mr. Mancusi, are you prepared to just give an update on pre-K numbers?
I, I am not, but I can get you current pre-K numbers next week.
And just to follow up on Mrs. Maxon Kinneley's question, because I was curious about this also, when you get us those enrollment numbers, I would also be curious about the peer ratio and where we are with that at both locations.
We will get you that as well, I can tell you that. As our numbers continue to grow at the ECC, our ratio will be decreasing, but we will get you the current ratio to our disabled versus non-disabled peer ratio, and we'll have it as, as of the date that we get the information.
Ms. Jacobson, follow up?
One other item to include in that report, if possible, please, is based on the August 29th numbers that we originally had at the start of school on pre-K, I'd like to understand a little bit about why there's such a big difference between ECC Ward and Stratfield this year.
Okay. I will meet with Mrs. Bruno.
That's a feeder issue or?
We'll get you that explanation.
And as we've said at prior meetings, that we're going to be just wanting to talk about preschool in an upcoming meeting in terms of how it will be affecting our facility utilization and what space we might be needing. So we'll follow up with, on that item as well, Mr. Mancusi. Okay, Mrs. Maxon Kinneley, sorry that we hijacked your, your questioning. Thank you for those follow-ups.
No, that's fine. That's it, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So we're moving on to international field trips. Dr. Parrish, this is yours too.
So as we resume, resume, excuse me, normal operations, we are opening up the opportunity for our students to participate in international field trip experiences. We have four field trips that have been presented for approval by the superintendent. They have submitted their preliminary applications as of September 15th. We have a copy of the International Travel Waiver, which has been revised in consultation with legal counsel to include some language in reference to impact of the pandemic or any other pandemic. Hopefully, that will not be the case, but we did want to have legal counsel revise that waiver that goes out to parents to be inclusive of some of that language. And so that is the next step in the process. And then in the winter, they will complete the Karma Insurance Application, which has also been revised. Karma has provided a revised version of that, which we have provided access to those who are pursuing international field trips. So at this date, we have a trip from Ward High School going to Italy over April break with 14 students. We have a trip also from Ludlow High School going to France during the same time period for 13 to 20 students. We have another trip from Fairfield Ward High School going to France during April break for 20, with 20 students. And finally, Roger Ludlow Middle School with a proposal to go to Spain with 40 students. Specific details around the purpose of those trips have been provided in the board memo, which is also enclosed within this packet, and providing you also the estimated cost per trip for each of those international trips that are being proposed.
Any questions? Okay, seeing them. It's just, just, just information, just reporting it out to the board.
Yeah, typically, I think it's been in a Friday packet, but because of the changes to the waiver, I thought that it, we thought that was important to actually present it this year as opposed to the typical procedure.
Appreciate it coming before the board, just in case anybody had any questions. I know that when the pandemic hit, that was somewhat of a challenge of what to do with those people that had registered for, for trips abroad. I'm very excited for our students that they have these opportunities. You know, when my daughter was in high school, she was a lucky girl that got to go on one of them, and it really is such a learning experience and a, a great opportunity for our kids. So I, I thank the staff that have volunteered to, to lead these trips and look forward to, to hearing about them in the spring. So thank you for that, Dr. Parrish, for that report.
Thank you.
Moving on to staffing update.
I'm going to ask Ms. Ingram to come forward for that. Thanks, Dr. Parrish, for managing the, I was going to call them field trips, they're more than that. They're, they're exciting opportunities for our kids, and it's important that we do it right. So thank you.
If they need chaperones, you know.
I'll volunteer.
Board retreat?
Good evening, Kanika Ingram, Executive Director of Human Resources. So in terms of our staffing updates, we have three vacancies for certified teachers. We have a world language vacancy open, but it's being filled by a long-term substitute who is in the process of being DSAP-ed. We have a tech ed position open that we just received a rec for hire for today.
Can you just, can you just explain what a DSAP is?
I'm sorry, yes. So it's a dur, a Durational Shortage Area Permit. So she is... So she is actually in the process of becoming certified. Her, her university, along with the district, is allowing her to teach full-time under this temporary certification. And then we also have a, um, a .7 general music position open that we're looking for. We have 23.9 para positions open. I want to thank Rob for just being very helpful and, um, executing to get the para professionals onboarded. I think we're doing fairly well. We are entering into partnerships with Fairfield University and Husaton Community College in terms of recruitment for substitutes and para professionals. And we are also working really closely with our Director of Communications on a marketing plan. So we will be visiting several universities and colleges for career fairs starting October 6th, going all the way through December. And we are also planning to have, um, some additional marketing material around the local community in terms of billboards. So we are working very hard to ensure that, um, we have, um, a fully staffed, um, district in terms of certified and non-certified, but also substitutes in case we need to, um, cover classes.
So did you say billboards?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll try anything.
Ms. Kelly?
Have we had to contract out for those positions yet, any of the para professionals?
Yes, we have.
Any other questions from Mrs. Ingram?
Just my thanks for leading the charge on our recruitment effort in a very tough market. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, budget transfer report. Dr. Tracy?
Yes, Ms. Laborius is here to discuss the transfer, uh, issues that we have. And I'll, I'll give her a chance to speak first and then I'll, I'll have some remarks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Vitale. Thank you, Mr., Dr. Tracy. The report that you see in your packet is a month-to-date report as of August 31st of our actual condition per our munis, our financial system of record. And we're bringing this to your attention because, um, as discussed in Finance Committee and also last year with the board, we'd, we'd like to do more timely transfers and speak with the board at the time that we're aware that the transfers are required. We'll be going into more detail during the Finance Committee sessions and bringing it back to the board through that process as well. And in this case, it was an emergency need to transfer funds from the contract line, which you would see is support expense, to the personnel line, which is, um, in the part-time to fund our crossing guards. So if you'll recall, the board authorized a budget of $193,842 to support crossing guards. We did attempt to go out to bid for those, um, in a, in an expedited timeframe. You know, we had to have them onboard for the start of the school year. And through work with the town, uh, Mr. Papa George and his team determined that it was, um, more expensive to go the contracted route rather than to hire in-house. So although we budgeted them on the contract line, um, we were able to bring them in-house and they're working with us and they've been, you know, at their posts and, and supporting our students since the school year started. We needed to do that during the summer so that we could get payroll going. In our past practice, we waited until year end to do the transfers or until the count was going to go in the red. We've, uh, bringing this to your attention because we'd like to more timely fund those transfers because this is a large dollar amount and it exceeds the board policy of more than $10,000 between major classification, major classification categories. We are asking that we add this as a voting item to be compliant with the policy for the next board meeting, but we wanted to bring it to your attention because we did it before asking for the board vote in the interest of the emergency, um, need to get school started. That said, we do have another proposal that we'll be bringing ahead, uh, forward to the board that was just mentioned earlier. And, um, Mrs. Kelly did ask about the, um, para educator contracted staff. So we do have a number of staff that, um, my, my colleague, Mr. Mancusi, has been able to, uh, get through the contract while they're simultaneously doing recruiting on the para educator side. They're not freezing any of their efforts on the hiring. They're full tilt ahead with recruiting efforts on both sides. That said, we do know what the contract obligation is for the individuals that we're hiring through the contract as we continue to look for in-house staff to do that, uh, those services. And so, uh, we'll give you, I'll give you a broad estimate. It's approximately $400,000 on contracted staff that we're looking at, but we'll have a absolute number for you at the next board meeting when we request the transfer, going from personnel line to the contract line in pupil personnel.
Mr. Asa?
So two things, just to clarify. So the $163,000 is, is not, not a new money, it's just moving it between categories, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And, and just correct me if I'm wrong, but actually in doing this, didn't we save money? Come in under the, the 163, potentially?
So let me say it this way, it is a little more expensive than what we budgeted, but it is less expensive than what we, um, saw when we went out to RFP with the town. So we're saving money in the sense that it's better for us to do it in-house, but we are having to fund a portion of their salaries. So this, um, transfer isn't the full amount. What I'm showing you is the transfer amongst major classifications. We're also transferring some smaller amount from that attrition account we've spoken about in the Personnel Services. I'll give you that full detail next week when, uh, for the vote.
Okay, so that money will transfer within the Personnel Services account bucket though?
We'll still be transparent, but it, it wouldn't require the vote, yes.
Okay, and then with regard to the approximate $400,000 contract, so, um, is that a, um, kind of forecasting transfer for what we think it might be? Or is that just a stopgap for what we need now?
So my colleague's joining me. Yes, please.
A- as of today, we currently have, um, eight staff members who we've, we've contracted with three different, um, agencies to fill vacant para positions primarily in our CLCs. So because we're working with three different agencies, the cost of those positions varies somewhat from agency to agency. And I, I just want to note that agencies too don't have staff on demand, so they, they have to recruit or they have to pull from elsewhere. So right now, we have eight. We have four other that we've committed to, but, uh, you know, they're pending being filled by the agency. So once we get those figures and those costs, we pass them on to, um, you know, Courtney's office.
And Mr. Mancusi, while you're up there, if, in our contracts with these companies, if we are able to start filling positions throughout the year, are we tied to these contracted positions for the year or, or not? And I say that not to say details, because I know some of them may be assigned to students that change is not good or whatever, um, but I'm just curious as to the, the actual...
Generally speaking, we are tied for the year.
And I'll just add, we do have contracts in place and we do know the dollar amount of those contracts for those three providers that, um, Mr. Mancusi spoke of. And that's what the total amount of the transfer will be. He and I are working very closely to monitor that on a monthly basis. Also, we'll be reporting it out through our report to the Finance Committee so that we make sure that the board's aware how many para professionals we have onboard, what our recruitment efforts are, how much are contracted, how much are in-house. You know, so we'll keep you apprised of that going forward as well.
And my last question there is regarding this, because these are contracts and we're going outside, are we having to work with the town's purchasing department through this to go out to bid or RFPs or anything like that? And, and I just, just in some assurance that we are in communications with them and following mutual guidelines here?
Sure, yeah, we, we are. The, the town has approved them. We've provided them the information they needed in order to get the purchase orders in place, all the backup information, and we did have conversations with them about it, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
First question, the previous report from HR on the down 29.3 paras, is that inclusive or exclusive of the contracted positions?
That's exclusive.
So we're still short the full 29.3 even with the contracted, okay?
Right now, there's many instances where we're filling open positions, but, uh, we're dealing with resignations as well.
Ms. Jacobson, can I just ask a question too? I think it was 23.9?
Oh, sorry.
Just to clarify.
Great, 23.9. The $400,000, um, that's just a transfer from existing money. That's not new money because we're using savings from the 23.9 or just the vacancies that we currently have to cover that. So it's not new additional expense.
Correct, it's, yeah, it's a way to make sure that we, right, yeah, in real time reflect the appropriate cost of the services. That's correct. It is coming from the personnel line vacancies for para educators.
So then, just my concern would be, um, would we have the money then available to pay to fulfill the 23.9? We'd be so lucky as to find the 23.9. I'm just saying, are we running into a deficit then?
We're working very hard, um, to live within the budgeted amount for the paras. And, um, the, the positions that we're filling with contracted staff is, you know, for lack of a better term, subtracted from the para dollar amount that we have allocated. So we're tracking both those amounts so we can live within the budget as best we can. Like I said, we are hot, trying very hard to hire people, but we're still losing people after we hire new staff too.
And just to add to that, when you look at the, um, I don't want to say savings because that sounds like a positive word. When you look at the value, dollar value of a position not filled, it includes, we also count the, um, insur-, the benefits. And so the cost of a contracted individual is a little bit higher, um, and we can give you that number. That said, we're really closely monitoring it. The whole goal is to fill those positions. And, um, oh, uh, how do I say? That's why we're doing the transfers so that we can see in the para line as we fill, you know, if we're close to going into a gap, we're, we're going to revisit. But, um, we're watching it and monitoring it and we'll be reporting it out through the Board of Finance, um, on a monthly basis.
Okay.
The Finance Committee.
When we, um, do these transfers or get more information on the next time, if we could just get a breakdown of the variance between the contracted positions and the, and what we had budgeted as a para, um, I would just like to know the variance there. Thank you.
Sure.
And just to follow up on that, I mean, I appreciate, you know, wanting to stay in that para budget, but a budget is just a budget and sometimes circumstances require changes throughout the year. You know, I don't think that any of us were for, expecting the amount of shortages that we are seeing across the board from crossing guards to bus drivers to para professionals to teachers. So thank you for, for updating us sooner rather than later. I appreciate getting it now and not at the quarterly report and we, when we find out about it. And as Ms. Laborius said, it will be coming to the Finance Committee for further discussion and oversight. Dr. Tracy?
Yeah, thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Mancusi and Ms. Laborius for their work in this area. We all recognize that the contract route is somewhat more expensive, but the fact that they've done that is why 30-something vacancies that you heard about last time is now 20-something. So we're, we still have a battle, but we're working our way in the right direction in the interest of, uh, keeping faith with our kids. So that's important. I understand, as Ms. Laborius said earlier, that the past practice has been to sort of wait until later in the year to deal with these things. But in my reading of your, your policy, uh, 3770, is that these transfer needs should come to you for approval as we become aware of them. So we're going to, we're going to catch up on the crossing guards on October 11th and we'll be presenting you, uh, something ahead of schedule, like we should have, on the, on the issue of the paras. But, uh, it's, um, it is a challenge and we're going to do everything that we can to fill all of these jobs, either directly for us or, or by way of contract. I did have a, a conversation with the board leadership and our incoming superintendent, alerting them to the fact that this aggressive approach could run this account into the red before the year was out. And I, I hope and expect that there would be sympathy if that were to occur, if, if these folks need some help to, to fill in a gap that may arise during the spring. But we want to get these positions filled and we want to take care of our, our students.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi, um, just really quick, with whatever is coming, um, next time, you said that you were going to have a schedule of, of the positions and whatnot. I, I know it's a different line, it's not the para educator line, but I'd have to imagine that if we were looking to find money to transfer, it would be coming from the salary line anyway. So I feel like if we could get an update on what those attrition numbers are, uh, I think that would be very helpful because unless I'm being a little Pollyanna-ish, I do feel like the odds of us running, regardless of how much we're paying the contract employees, I think that we underestimated the savings in the, um, attrition. And I, uh, cautiously optimistic that we will not be in the red, but it would be nice to have those numbers sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and my hope is to bring that to the Finance Committee because I would, I would like to share that data with you as well. So, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Dr. Tracy, any, any, anything else come up in the last, you know, 12 hours since we were, you know?
I don't have anything further right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Laborius and Mr. Mancusi. Ms. Kelly?
Sorry, this isn't for Courtney, but I don't know if this is the right time. Please tell me if it's not the right time. I just figured, um, since we had gotten that email today about the math textbooks, I was wondering if, I was a little confused by the email. I was wondering if I can get a little clarification on, do we have the supplies we need? Do we not have the supplies we need? Like, I'm a little, I was, I was a little confused about it. I was hoping that since everybody's in the same room, maybe we could address that.
My sense is that we'll, we're going to come back to this. Ms. Guernsey raised the question. I tried to get answers from the folks who knew, but it seems like every answer begat more questions. So it, it may be a topic that should come back to the board when, when Dr. Rasmussen can be here to have a little back and forth and answer the question.
Okay, I just...
It'll be on a, it'll be on a, want to get some more information on that. And Dr. Tracy was, you know, not, um, here, so I didn't think it was really fair for him to be addressing at this time. And, um, you know, given the shortened timeline on this, the appropriate staff were, were not. But stay tuned on that. Back to the board for any committee reports. We'll start, Mr. Peterson?
I just want to say, last week, we presented the, uh, Q4, uh, for last year report to the Board of Finance. Courtney was, was very ably, uh, answering their questions. Uh, we've got a lot of questions actually about, uh, transportation, which I thought was interesting. But otherwise, uh, that, uh, went very smoothly.
Ms. Teresa?
So I mentioned a little bit, the Facilities Committee met, um, recently and, um, we discussed several items, including some of the work that Mr. Papa George presented tonight. We also looked at the priority list of projects and gave him some feedback for what we think, um, the board would want to see regarding that and some of the numbers on there. And we also talked about the, um, getting into redistricting and the, um, charge and the guiding principles and how we may look at that to bring, uh, forth to the board at a future special meeting specifically for this. So we will be scheduling, or I will be scheduling, a, a committee meeting in the near future, possibly before the next scheduled one, um, to get to work on that and bring the board a, a starting point based on the existing documents so that we could discuss at an open special meeting.
We're starting with the, um, the planning principles that is in the Facility's guide that last was updated, I think it was 2010. The, um, you know, keep the neighborhood schools, maintain walkers, um, get students out of portables. A lot of those things may still be, you know, principles that we want to adhere to. But, um, I think that over the last 10 years, safety and security have taken a bigger role. The HVAC has been guiding a lot of our planning needs and we just wanted to make sure that that document was capturing where we are and what the principles that we've been using currently. So we figured we'd do that at the committee level first and then bring it to the board for, for discussion and, um, updating. Ms. Teresa?
Uh, yes, Mrs. Cannelly had us asked if I could read an update for her for Parks and Rec.
Sure.
So from Parks and Rec, one item of great interest to Fairfield Public Schools, the most up-to-date plans for the RLMS field renovation. Does appear to have room for a baseball field. It will at least be available for practice. Games are a future conversation, but limited right now by budget. And Mrs. Cannelly is happy to answer any questions if, um, you send them to her.
Thank you, Mrs. Max Cannelly, for that update. That's very good news. Any other committee reports? Mrs. Gruber?
Just to follow up, I know I've been saying that Mill Hill is, is nearing the, the end of its, uh, project, but it sounds like it's really... the end of its, uh, project, but it sounds like it's really, uh, getting there now. And I spoke to, uh, the Building Committee Chair, Mr. Lee, um, and he would like, um, Mrs. Vitale and myself and, and perhaps Mr. Asa, if he's available, to just do a, a walkthrough. There are a couple of questions, I think I brought up at the last meeting, that there were some concerns about some of the landscaping work that was done outside, um, some planting and some seeding that was done and with the drought conditions we had, uh, just some concerns that they may need to do a little additional work. So, just wanted to kind of get, uh, some board, uh, weigh-in on that. So, I thought we could try to set something up, um, check it out. If we feel that it's something that the rest of the board should see, we could try to do that as well. And, um, and then hopefully, at some point relatively soon, uh, Mr. Lee will be coming to us, uh, to ask us to approve the project as complete. And, uh, I will keep you posted.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. Since, uh, Ms. Rotelli is not here, I will give the SEPTA report. SEPTA met last night. I attended. I was, uh, joined by our new, our incoming superintendent, Mr. Testani was also present, as well as Mr. Mancusi and the whole Special Ed Administrative Team. You know, they're kicking off, um, and Ms. Marte also was with us last night. Uh, they are, they're kicking it into gear, um, with some events. The, mm, trying to think, the most recent current, I mean, upcoming, excuse me, uh, upcoming event is, um, Tricker Trunk at North Stratfield Elementary School. I think the date was the 23rd. No, 22nd? No, don't. 28th? All right. Thank, thank you, Ms. Flynn. So, I just checked the, um, SEPTA website for more information. They have a lot of, um, upcoming events planned, but that is the, uh, that and a pie sale. So, pies and cookies will be on sale also. So, if anybody, uh, needs some treats for Thanksgiving, please check out SEPTA. They're also selling pies that will support Operation Hope through their, um, their sale. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the, um, Town Capital Working Group has started meeting again. I attended that meeting yesterday as well. That meeting was a closed meeting. Future meetings will be open to the public. Uh, I will get the board the upcoming dates for that. I encourage members of the public who are listening, just to keep an eye on the town website. The, um, working rule will be first addressing capital projects that are coming up for approval for the next fiscal year. And the ultimate goal is to come up with a, a five-year capital plan for the town that 'll incorporate both school projects and town projects. And I also had the pleasure, um, this morning of joining the parent community at Dwight. Dr. Tracy and I were invited by Ms. Maniscalco and the PTA president there, just to, to speak to them, some of their concerns, um, surrounding redistricting and some of our discussions we've had at the board level about possibly, um, taking, whether or not it's feasible to take a school offline as we're having these redistricting discussions. I, um, shared with that community what, where we are, that basically we have, there are no redistricting plans. There has been no decision about taking any school offline. The only thing that has been approved by this board is the racial imbalance plan, which includes a redistricting. That redistricting right now, as scheduled in that plan, will not take, um, effect until 2024. We are very much at the early stages of this discussion. This discussion will be happening at the facility, as part of the Facilities Committee, where appropriate, at the Finance Committee, at the board level, through special meetings. And look, and, you know, we will be, also be presenting to the State Board of Education the racial imbalance plan on October 12th. More likely, some special meetings about this, as Mr. Asa had mentioned, um, as we move forward with developing a charter in Long Island Room, deciding what our planning principles should be. So, I would just encourage the public just to stay tuned, keep your eye on the Board of Ed website for upcoming meetings, both at the committee level and our regular Board of Ed meeting, um, schedule. We will work with staff about getting a dedicated webpage, just to kind of house some of the documents that we will need to be referencing, um, as these discussions move forward. And I think that that is it for me. Any final reports? Dr. Tracy, anything else that I left out there?
Nope. I think we're set.
All right. Okay. Moving on, open board comment. Okay. Seeing none, we'll take it to the public. Any, we welcome the public again to come forward and give any comment on agenda items. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. David Krosnov, 155 Burr Street. I just wanted to comment on the elementary numbers that we went over today. As you said, SLAM did miss the boat by about 44 students. They did give the presentation in June, so it's not too long since they made their presentation. My concern is that is a 1% change. We are talking about taking a school offline. If there's a 1% change each year over the next 10 years, they said there's gonna be 10% growth, that would be 20% growth, uh, meaning about 400 students. So, not only could we not take a school offline, we'd actually have to add another school. So, I do want you guys to keep that all in mind. The, the data is off, like I said.
Thank you very much for the comment.
Hi there. Katie Flynn, uh, 204 Grandview Road. First off, in a liaison position as a SEPTA member, I gave you the wrong date. It is October 23rd, the SEPTA trunk retreat at North Stratfield. And I just booked it today, so I should know that. But, um, in this capacity, I'm gonna be speaking as a parent. I am actually a parent of two of the North Stratfield students in the second grade section. Just a little history on that group. Last year, they began school in three sections and added a fourth section about six days into school. This year, we began school and on the second day of school, reduced a section. And I can tell you, I made comment here that night about it. I encourage you guys to look at the policy. Since that time, I went to open house and I saw the drastic difference for our students and for our staff. And I will absolutely agree with, um, the administration that our principal and our teachers handled it beautifully. Our kids are happy and are in good shape, but I will reiterate, please explore a policy about a drop date. To see a group of 70 kids go through this tumultuous of changes, two years in a row, last year, I would argue that it was a worthwhile change. This year, I would argue it was not. And to disrupt kids this shortly after such a impactful time to their education in the K2 area, when Fairfield is really an outlier in class sizes for that age group, is concerning. And as we go into redistricting talks and these are the decisions being made, as a parent, I'm concerned. So, we're watching, we're paying attention and I would encourage the board to look at their policies as they are exploring redistricting as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn, for, for your comments and for, for all of your work through the PTA Council. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none. Um, thank you, everybody, for coming. Happy fall. I hope everyone, uh, has a good two weeks until we meet again. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Jacobson, seconded by Ms. Guernsey, all in favor? Motion carries. Oh, she's there. Eight-zero. Have a good night, Mrs. Max and Cannelli. We missed you. Be here in person.